The May 5 meeting of the Salina City Commission to Order, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Veneer.
Here.
Commissioner Jelka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
I'd like to invite everybody to stand and for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now have the citizens forum a time for citizens to come before the commission to discuss anything that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone in the audience today? If not, before we move on to awards and proclamations, I would like to offer a motion to remove item 8.2 from today's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove item 8.2 from the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. Awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the week of May 11 through the 17, 2008, as National Police Week and May 15, 2008, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in the city of Salina. Officer Tim Brown will read the proclamation.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having us today. It's an honor for me to read the proclamation of the city of Salina, Kansas, whereas the Congress of the United States of America has designated the week of May 11 through May 17 to be dedicated as National Police Week and May 15 of each year to be Peace Officer Memorial Day, and whereas law enforcement officers are our guardian of life and property, defenders of the individual rights to be free men, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the city of Salina desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own peace officers, four of whom have been killed in the line of duty since 1917, and whereas it is known that every one and a half days, an American police officer will be killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States, and 230 officers will be assaulted in the performance of their duties, our community joins with other cities and towns to honor all peace officers everywhere, and I, John Veneer, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11 to May 17 to be Police Week, and call upon all our citizens in this community to especially honor and show our sincere appreciation for the police officers of this city by deed, remark, and attitude. I call upon all citizens to make every effort to express their thanks to our officers who make it possible for us to leave our homes and family in safety each day and return to our homes knowing they are protected by officers willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Signed this 5th day of May, 2008, at the city of Salina, state of Kansas, and the witness thereof, the seal and signatures of the city are affixed.
Officer Brown, what activities do you have planned for the week?
On May 15 at 8:00 a.m., Mayor, we're going to have a Memorial Day service in Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. There will be refreshments there, and everyone is invited to attend.
Very good, thank you. And on behalf of the citizens of Salina, thank you very much for all that you do.
You're welcome.
And I have a signed copy of the proclamation.
Okay.
We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time. Move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 28, 2008. Item 6.2, award of contract for the 2008 Concrete Pavement Improvements Project Number 082697, two pavers incorporated in the amount of $270,225.50. Item 6.3, acceptance of a general public utility easement on Burma and Waterwell Roads. Item 6.4, award of contract for underground irrigation system at the East Crawford Recreation Area, Project Number 082685, to professional sprinkler installation in the amount of $14,757.60. Item 6.5, Resolution Number 086517, authorizing the city manager to instruct binding coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance. Item 6.6, Resolution Number 086515, amending the Economic Development Service Agreement with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce.
Are there any items that anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda? And I would entertain some action.
May I have a move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes 5-0. Development business.
Item 7.1, Application C08-1, requesting a comprehensive review and amendment to the list of permitted and conditional uses in Section 42-302 and 42-303 in the C4 Central -- C4 District. Subitem 7.1A, First Reading Ordinance Number 0810446.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, since your initiation at the end of January, when we were discussing a text amendment that allowed for ground floor accessory apartments in the downtown C4 District, the commission asked staff to review and prepare a report on some of the listed conditional uses in the C4 District that there were questions about and to determine whether there were valid reasons for classifying them as conditional, meaning that they would require a notice of neighbors and a public hearing before they were established as opposed to simply being permitted, meaning that they could go into a building or tenant space without any review. The particular point of emphasis was appliance stores, drinking establishments, furniture repair and restoration shops, glass mirror sales and service, hand crafts, and ceramics. Many of those were added to the list of conditional uses in 1992, and then there were some additional amendments allowing teen centers, drinking establishments, and car washes as conditional that occurred after that 1992 amendment. What planning staff did was go back to the original C4 District regulations as they were drafted, looked at the 1992 amendments, and looked at the 2001 drinking establishment amendments, and tried to determine what the rationale was for making various uses conditional versus permitted. As near as we could tell in reading through the lines, the issue about appliance stores, which would seem to apply to furniture stores and other types of stores, was there was a concern about lack of suitable truck access for large appliance stores or dealers, particularly the fact that some of the alleys in the downtown area are not open to truck traffic for loading and unloading, and that could possibly occur on Santa Fe, and therefore those locations needed to be reviewed. I think we attached there a very detailed background report on drinking establishments and how those came to be conditional uses in the downtown C4 District. Furniture repair and restoration shop, as near as we could tell, it related to concerns about the potential use of flammable products and how that could potentially impact a neighboring owner or tenant, and therefore the could force firewall or other improvements, and therefore notice was important. Looking at the glass mirror and sales and service, that also appeared to date back to the time when Harding Glass was on 7th Street, and there were concerns about truck loading and unloading, and whether there were certain locations that weren't suitable for those types of uses that had a lot of truck deliveries or traffic. Hand crafts and ceramics was similar to furniture repair, in that it -- there was concern about kilns and the use of certain flammables, and where you have common walls downtown, where the introduction of one on one side of a wall might require an owner of a building or space next door to have to do some improvements. So those, we could tell, were the reasons for that. Looking at that in retrospect, there are not particularly great reasons for making those conditional uses or things that couldn't be dealt with just in a building permit review, but the experience in the downtown area has been, for the most part, to scratch where it itches, and if there was a particular use that was a particular concern or irritant at a particular time, it got added to the list of conditional uses. So we could see in each of those cases, and in the case of drinking establishments of certain types, moving those from conditional to permitted uses. We also wanted to give the Board of Advisors and others a chance to look at other types of uses, and so they actually recommended looking at massage parlors, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, and pawn shops as clarifying those as conditional uses, and also dog kennels, mini warehouses, small animal hospitals, private clubs, and recycling centers as uses that should be conditional. We also had some discussions about packaged liquor stores and how those should be treated, and also private surface parking lots, and that was based partially on a recommendation in the downtown parking master plan that said the private surface parking lots in the downtown core should be discouraged. So I think you can see from the minutes and the correspondence from the Board of Advisors, there was quite a bit of input and opportunity for a discussion of each of those uses, and the Board of Advisors made some pretty detailed recommendations, which the Planning Commission concurred with at their review on April the 15th. I think that probably the biggest change or policy change recommended would be that back in 2001, it was the recommendation that all drinking establishments, any place in the downtown that served alcoholic beverages, no matter what its size or character, should have to get a conditional use permit, and the recommendation that came out of the Board of Advisors is that if we can distinguish bars from restaurants for smoking purposes, we ought to be able to do it for conditional use permit purposes. So their recommendation was that if you have an establishment such as Martinelli's or Martinis or a place like that that has food service and happens to serve alcoholic beverages, that that should go back to being a permitted use, and if you have a Groove or a Big Nose Cates or an establishment like that, that is a pure bar with no food service or kitchen, that that should continue to be a conditional use. And so that'll take a little bit of tweaking of some definitions to make sure that we classify it that way, but I think that's my best synopsis of the recommendations. The Board of Advisors made recommendations, the Planning Commission concurred with those and recommended that those be adopted. I think the best thing to do, and those are reflected in the draft ordinance that is there for your review, and we tried to go in there and highlight what was changed and what got moved where. I think with that, we try to open ourselves up for questions.
Questions to staff.
I really don't have questions, but I think this did expand somewhat from what I thought it would when we made the motion last January, and I'm pleased to see so much thought and work has gone to it. There are several things in this, though, that I'm thinking we'd be better off if we eliminated entirely as permitted uses in the C4 District, and maybe some other changes from what was discussed, and I just, I don't know if these things were discussed, but let's see, starting on the blue sheet. I don't know which is the easiest way to look at this, look at the blue sheet or look at the, I guess the blue sheet's probably easiest. Page four, the Board of Advisors of downtown suggests the following uses go to conditional uses, that being massage parlors, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, and body piercing studios. I would be in favor of eliminating those as allowable uses in C4 entirely.
So would I.
And similarly over at dog kennels, mini warehouses, small animal houses, on the hospital on the next page, that those probably don't need to be in the C4 District at all either.
Suggestion, maybe you could point those out in the proposed ordinance.
Okay.
Scratch them out.
I understand the massage parlor and the tattoo parlor and body piercing, but I don't understand the thought behind the payday loan. Is it because of the traffic of the people?
Some of it has to do with the, there's a tendency for them, the two ways that that's primarily been dealt with is either by a conditional use process or a separation process, because as you can see from South Broadway, there's a tendency for them to kind of congregate, and so the two ways that communities have dealt with them, they do tend to operate in a little different way than a traditional bank or financial institution, and before they were considered to be kind of marginal uses, but when we were doing research for that, we found that there are 30,000 McDonald's locations in the United States, and that there are 22,000 payday loan company locations in the United States. So on a nationwide basis, it's becoming as close to being as frequent as a fast food type restaurant, but they do tend to have different advertising and different techniques. They're also viewed sometimes as a use that depresses property values if they locate and congregate in certain areas. Our concern for listing those out is that there's kind of a catch-all, which is both a good thing and a bad thing in the C4 District, that it basically says that any use that's not specifically listed, that has similar characteristics to uses that are listed, are permitted, and so a lot of times, that's highlighted on page three of your blue sheet, but the final provision that says any other similar retail business not specifically listed is permitted if it complies with the conditions and restrictions contained in Section 42-306. And part of this reason, Commissioner Purney, why this expanded a little bit, is that we staff expressed its discomfort with that somewhat open-ended provision, which left it to us to figure out whether a massage parlor or a tattoo parlor or a payday loan company was similar to, is it similar to a barber shop or beauty shop or tanning salon? Is it similar to a, is a payday loan company just the same as a savings and loan? So rather than leaving that to staff to try to figure out when somebody wants to put one in on Santa Fe, to at least identify these uses and get some feedback from the Board of Advisors on others, there probably is a way that you can go in there and actually call those out as prohibited, but what we didn't want to do was leave them unmentioned and then just leave it to us to have to figure out if somebody calls up on the phone and says, can I put a tattoo parlor on South Santa Fe? Then it, if it's unstated, then under that open-ended provision, it kind of leaves it to us to try to figure out whether that's the same as a beauty shop or barber shop.
Commissioner Purney, what was your remark on the, about the properties on page five? In addition to those others, you think those should be exempt also?
I think that those should be prohibited downtown also. Well, back to the catch-all. Is there any proposed change in that catch-all? The number that is cited is not, I don't even see where it falls in the proposed ordinance. The 32-30280 is shoe repair shops in the, am I looking at the wrong paragraph here? Because it looks like maybe that should be changed to any other similar use has to be considered as a conditional use would be one solution. And then eliminate those five or six items as...
And prohibit them from...
Well, in effect prohibit them, at least not list them as an approved use or an approved conditional use.
And it actually moves up to, it's item 88.
It's now 88 now.
Instead of 80 because of the uses that were inserted, but the idea behind that is that you can, whenever you draft a zoning ordinance and a list of uses, there's always changing technology, there's always things that, uses that you didn't think of, and so the idea of that is to get some flexibility there, but with flexibility also comes discretion, and so it was, this was an opportunity for us to say, well, how would you feel if somebody proposed a tattoo parlor next to Mokas on South Santa Fe, and we just said that was permitted because it was similar to a barber shop?
What is the problem there?
What is the problem there with a tattoo parlor? It's not necessarily that there is a problem, but these are all uses that have been identified through various studies and what communities have done that can either potentially depress property values or drive other types of businesses to different locations.
But if they have certain criteria that they have to meet for their storefront and their window appeal...
Well, we don't have that criteria. You can put anything in your window. There's no regulation on window signs.
Well, I mean, getting on the outside, I mean, if you're going to have a rundown storefront and not keep it looking attractive, it will ruin your downtown. I want to know what the difference is, if you do this dog kennel thing, what's the difference between that and the soggy dog business? I realize that's pet grooming, so you don't overnight your pets there, do you?
Right. Dog kennels tend to have longer stays and greater need for places to...
Walk.
Our observation is if a dog needs to be, and Commissioner Peck probably sees this more than ourselves, but we usually see the dogs come over to the city county building for their, to be brought over to have exercise or a place to go, but that's one of the issues in the downtown areas, that if you have a dog kennel and you need a place to...
There's no place for a run.
There's really no place for them to get out or... So that was a question, whether the downtown setting is really suitable for that type of use, and the Board of Advisors didn't want to go so far as to say, well, they shouldn't be allowed at all, but they thought not every place was equal.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, you know, that's why it's useful to go through this exercise every once in a while, and it's far better for you to decide than for staff to have to try to figure it out.
So, you know, there's a lot of this that makes sense to me. I guess I just have a problem, I know Commissioner Purney, you know, looking at massage parlors and tattoo parlors and so forth, you know, you and Commissioner Jelka have a little bit more of an interest in downtown ownership than what I do, but at the same time, I mean, are we kind of just saying, you know, there's just a chance? First of all, the business you operate, it's a little weird. It's on the fringe just a little bit, and I don't feel real comfortable with it, and there's a darn good chance, studies have shown, that it could depress my property value.
And that's the discussion you would have if it is a conditional use on every case-by-case basis, so maybe that is the best way to address it.
Yeah.
To leave it as a conditional use.
And that's kind of the philosophy that Dean just expressed, that it's better to list those things on the front end as conditional use, so that when one comes up, you know you will have a discussion, and you're not leaving it to staff to make the decision.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm about to swing back around and say, okay, leave them in as conditional use, because after all, but I mean, personally, though, I would never, if I were in any conditional hearing process for a dog kennel, I'm voting no, and if I'm not on the panel, I'm going over there as a neighbor and voting no, but maybe that's the best way to do it.
I would go with your first inclination. I think it's pretty clear, the evidence would, the studies would suggest that those uses would depress property values.
And some of these others, like the mini warehouse, one of the worst mistakes made in the last 20 years near downtown was approving the mini warehouse at 5th and Walnut, or 4th, yeah, 5th and Walnut, which is, was a special rezoning to C5, and we didn't, we, I say we, since I was one of the 4th Street property owners that should have fought it, I didn't, and I regret it still, because a mini warehouse is like a dead spot in your commercial zone for all practical purposes, and we don't want to be encouraged in dead zones downtown.
Let me ask, Dean, a mini warehouse, for instance, a building owner that has a basement that he partitions off and would want to lease to people to, for storage, is that considered a mini warehouse?
If you, in other words, he took a multi-story building and divided it up for...
Well, he's got a multi-story building that has tenants on 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th floor, whatever, but in the basement decided to partition that off to allow people to store records.
I would think we would consider that to just be an accessory storage for that building, and many, many warehouses is pretty...
That's an actual...
Specific and actual use exactly, as Commissioner Purney described it, the building that's over there, where you build it specifically with the idea of dividing it up and renting out space cubicles within a specifically designed building.
And what are private clubs?
The private clubs, the currently, I think what we have downtown would be the Eagles and things like that, but there are provisions, and the reason we brought it up, there are provisions whereby a place like Big Nose Cates or the Groove could declare themselves to be a private club but operate the same way that they would currently, and just have memberships instead of operating to the general public, but the term private club is primarily a place that does serve alcoholic beverages, but it does so through memberships or limited access, but there are still places where, I mean, you could turn the Groove into a private club and it could operate essentially the same way that it does. So that was based partially on the state liquor laws.
I see.
But the only examples I can think of right now would be the Eagles Club there on 7th Street. I don't think I'm aware of any other private clubs that are leased in the downtown area.
And so if the commission desired to eliminate, for instance, on, I believe it's page 1, 2, 3, 4, page 5, dog kennels, mini warehouses, private clubs, recycling centers, business such as Images would be grandfathered in, continue to operate until...
They would be grandfathered in.
Until they changed ownership, or what happens?
Till they were closed and abandoned. The space was abandoned for 12 months.
Okay.
Then they would lose their grandfather status, or if they ever wanted to buy additional property and expand, they wouldn't be able to if they weren't in some way listed as a permitted or conditional use.
Okay.
So primarily, we did that because when we were doing some other amendments, we actually defined what a recycling center was, and so we seemed like, since Images met that, we should specifically call out that use in the downtown area.
Okay.
Quick point of clarification, Dean, on massage parlors versus massage therapy locations, simply licensing or certification from the state of Kansas is enough, I mean, that's all they need to...
That is what distinguishes them, it's actually similar, not exactly similar, but to chiropractic or other types of things, there is a certification and a test and an actual certification or license issued by the state of Kansas for people who are certified massage therapists, and so the way that would be distinguished is if you had a chiropractic office or some other type and you offered certified massage therapist there... other type, and you offered certified massage therapist there, that would be permitted. The massage parlor where nobody there is, has any, it's not there for any medical or therapeutic purpose, but for other purposes, that's the way that would be distinguished.
Mr. Andrew, the formerly number 48 on the list of permitted uses, mini warehouses, is that what you're meaning to say with number 26, the conditional uses?
Well, if I recall, the, under the present ordinance, mini warehouses were listed as permitted in the C4 district, which.
You're moving it to conditional.
Which didn't make any sense. Staff was actually more, to Mr. Purney's thinking, we didn't see any place in the C4 district where mini warehouses themselves were really a very good fit. But making them conditional at least makes that subject to review, so that if, say, the lot south of First Bank, Kansas, which became vacant on South Santa Fe, so you couldn't have somebody do that as a.
I agree with Ms. Purney. I agree with Ms. Purney too. I'm just asking, is number 26 the?
The conditional?
The conditional for?
What we did was took the recommendations from the board. Now, number 26 is, that would be a true warehouse, like a moving and storage warehouse or something like that.
Let me reword it then. Where is, where is it moved? Where is it moved to? I don't see it in the list of conditional uses.
What we did was just tried to identify where it was today and where we would move it to, so it's not actually numbered, because we realized that this could get further adjusted. So it is.
It's not in the proposed ordinance?
Some of them are and some aren't.
It's if you go to 48 on the permitted uses, and you'll see mini warehouses, and you'll see an arrow that shows that being moved to conditional.
Only it hadn't been moved.
I mean, there isn't another.
Well, the reason we didn't move it is because we were going to wait to see how this discussion played out, and whatever you all decided, then we would clean the ordinance up for second reading. But we were of the mind that some of these things could still be moved around, and we just wanted to show you what was there existing and what was proposed.
I thought that when it had an arrow, for example, 55 pawn shops.
Is moved.
Is moved, and it's number 15 under the conditional uses.
So, so we make mini warehouses number 27, or we have to keep an alphabetical order at the number 14 and a half?
If we moved it to alphabetical order, we would put it after massage parlors as 14.
13, fine.
Are there other questions or comments of staff? How about public comment? None, I'll bring it back to the commission, and what's your pleasure?
I would like to move that we, procedural question, if we by large agree with it, we need to get a motion on the table to accept the ordinance as presented, and then we can add any amendments to it we want?
The, I suppose it can be done either way. It might be good to get a motion, the main motion before the commission.
Okay. I would move that we adopt on first reading ordinance 08-10446.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 08-10446. Discussion.
I would like to offer an amendment that mini warehouses, payday loan companies, tattoo parlors, be deleted from the list of conditional uses.
Second, and then in discussing that, then they're not mentioned at all, right? They're not permitted uses, they're not conditional uses.
They're being deleted.
Yes.
You want them deleted. But that's the discussion, so that wasn't a motion?
Well, that was the second of the motion, and then the immediate discussion.
Okay.
Without letting the chairman call for discussion, I'm sorry.
I think there would be more than enough evidence to suggest that those individual businesses do in fact lead to deterioration of property values in the area. And Commissioner Purney has cited some examples.
And so you want to leave massage parlors on the list?
Well, they changed that, or?
The proposal presently, I guess, does have massage parlors listed as a conditional use. So it would be. Where's it defined in here? Right there is where it's mentioned. It's number 13 on the conditional list, yeah. Let me leave my amendment there for a second, we'll deal with that separately.
Okay. We need to pass the, or vote on the amendment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. It has been, a motion for an amendment to the ordinance has been made to delete mini warehouses, payday loan facilities, and tattoo parlors from the list of conditional uses.
Excuse me, Mayor, was the motion to amend seconded? I didn't?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion on the amendment? If not, those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
That passes 3-2. With Vanir and Peck voting against. Now, we still have the original motion and any other amendments?
Yeah, I guess that's, that'd be the remaining question.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 08-10446, with the following amendment, mini warehouses, payday loans, and tattoo parlors will be deleted from the list of conditional uses. Is there any further discussion?
Where is the definition of, I thought there was a definition of massage parlor in here?
We gave one for illustration.
Simply.
Purposes, to explain what, how that differed. And it is in a packet there.
Yeah, I know, I read it, but.
It's right, right before the actual application and right after the information about the smoking ordinance.
Right before the information about the smoking ordinance?
Just after the information on the smoking ordinance. There's a page there that had definitions for massage parlor, pawn shop, payday loan company, tattoo parlor, and recycling center.
Okay, I'll offer another amendment, that we delete that from permitted uses.
Okay, I guess I'll second that one also. We'll put them off into never, never land.
You want to eliminate that from conditional uses?
Yes. Is that where it is currently?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to eliminate it from the list of conditional uses.
Okay, a motion has been made, an amendment, a motion for an amendment to the original motion has been made to eliminate massage parlors from the conditional uses. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
So if I agree with this, I can vote in favor of this, but if I disagree with all the amendments overall, I will vote opposed on the overall.
I thought we already voted on the overall.
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
Didn't we start out by voting on the overall, and now we're amending?
Yeah.
Now we're amending.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Just pointing clarification on Commissioner Purney's question, I, there's not been a vote on the main motion.
We have not voted on the overall.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The only vote was on the first amendment.
We're voting on the second amendment right now.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay, I have another amendment.
The amendment passes 5-0 to eliminate massage parlors.
I would still like to see if we could somehow amend that number 88 in the permitted uses, that's the consideration of any other similar retail business, not specifically listed, instead of saying is permitted, can be considered as a conditional use. Can we do something like that?
Number 88?
In number 88 in the permitted uses. And if it complies with the conditions and restrictions of a conditional use, so that it would have hearings and have to be approved as a conditional use. So if you pull something out of thin air that's not listed in the 91, plus roughly 27 other uses, it has to be considered under the 27.
And you want to amend that to do what?
I want to do that so that if you come up with creative thinking or some new business arises, that it would have to be considered as a conditional use, rather than leave it entirely to staff to say, yeah, it's similar.
Commissioner, what it would do, if you eliminated that altogether, it'd give you a couple of options. One would be to go through the full conditional use process. Another would be to decide whether or not to amend the ordinance to allow that, add that, whatever that use might be, as a permitted use in the future. I was going to ask Dean, Dean typically, when you look at that, the phrasing of that, and you hear a use that we haven't dealt with before, what do you take into consideration when determining whether to allow that?
We just try to look at the characteristics of the use and to see what other types of uses it has, whether it has similar parking needs, whether it has similar noise or impact needs, what that might entail. But I mean, that was, I think Tattoo Shop was one that came to mind for us, just because you could make an argument that a tattoo shop's just like a beauty shop or barber shop, and it has about the same amount of square footage and parking needs, and it doesn't necessarily produce a lot of noise. So it has a lot of the same characteristics, other than the fact that studies have shown it tends to depress property values versus a beauty shop or a barber shop, but that's not really staff's call to make. We're just looking at how the characteristics of the use are.
So if the characteristics aren't pretty, almost identical to some of the other uses in there, you would typically then throw that out for?
We would recommend, in those kind of cases where it just wasn't clear that the applicant filed a text amendment to get that added to the list.
I understand the purpose of Mr. Purney's proposed amendment. On the other hand, I don't want to throw any bureaucratic hurdles in front of people unnecessarily. Under this language here, if there's a proposed use that comes across your desk that you question, can you send the, send a proposed text amendment?
Well, I mean, if we weren't absolutely confident and had qualms about it, I mean, you could put that, I guess you could put tattoo parlor in that category, that if we really had qualms about it, our answer would be, no, that's not similar to any other permitted business in the downtown. So if you want to do a tattoo parlor, you need to apply to amend the list of uses in C4. That's one response that we can have. The idea for having that in there is to not create bureaucratic hurdles or not make somebody have to amend the text every time there's a use that, because of the age of the ordinance or things, is not currently on the list, because you just can't, you can't conceive every single type of retail business that might want to locate in the downtown. So you have to look at, list the ones that are clearly identifiable, and then look if new ideas are similar. But that, I would probably agree with Mr. Gage, that the best course of action to let the decision be made is to say, no, that's not really close enough or similar enough, you need to apply for an amendment to add that to the list of uses. That would be the cleanest thing for staff to do. The reason that that, again, is in there is just so you don't unnecessarily force somebody to do that when it's just because it's a new technology or something that just happened not to get listed, so.
Yeah, I'm sure periodic review of these, like we're doing now, is a good thing, but in the meantime, I think I would be willing to trust staff's judgment on those kind of things.
Commissioners, I will say, the language that you see here is very common, and you would find this type of language in just about any other city's ordinance. I did want to be sure to have Mr. Andrew clarify, though, that the window of discretion is pretty small, and it is intended to be very similar to what you have in here, and anything outside of that would go for text amendment.
So is there a motion?
I guess not. We'll leave that language in there and go for it.
Very good. We have a motion to approve ordinance number 08-10446 that has been seconded and amended. We're back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion passes 4-1, with Commissioner Peck opposing.
We will get that all cleaned up and numbered appropriately for second reading, so you can see how that all falls out. And that's why we do that once every 16 years.
Okay. Thank you much.
Item 7.2, application number PDD 08-1, requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from A1 to Plan Development District R1 and R2 in the Golden Eagles Estates Edition Number 5. Sub item 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 08-10445.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Vanir. And commissioners, the area that's referred to as Golden Eagle Estates is really the area that lies on the east side of the Huntington Road Drainage Ditch and north of Magnolia Road. And that particular area covers about 95 acres, and it has developed sequentially from Magnolia Road, moving to the north. And the application for rezoning and for approval of a planned development district and preliminary. and preliminary development plat and plan is for the final remaining piece, which is approximately 31 acres that is located north of Wayne Avenue and east of the Huntington Road ditch. This property is currently unplatted. It's the only piece left that hasn't been platted. It was annexed into the city in 2005 and it was zoned agricultural. At the time, it's kind of a holding zone. And the application and most everything in Golden Eagle Estates has been done as a planned development district primarily because every phase has had something where the standard residential zoning standards just didn't work or just didn't fit. So in this particular case, there are some variations that are being requested because of the tightness of the site. And first and foremost of those is the circular roadway that you see there, that basically is a circle there, is proposed as Wildcat Circle. And the proposal there, because of the wires, the transmission lines to the south, the Huntington Ditch on the west, the Oxbow in the north, the levee on the east, they're requesting reduced front yard setbacks from 25 to 20 feet on all of those lots. And on the lots next to the substation on Wayne, reductions to 15 feet with parking most likely to the side or the rear. And so on the lots that are directly west of the sub, or east of the substation, they are requesting an R2 designation and originally requested to be able to build buildings that had up to four units in a building. And they were proposing multiple multifamily apartment buildings on the lot at the east end of Wayne Avenue, which would be on the east side of Red Hawk Lane there. This property is certainly well situated for residential development. It actually, the land itself does actually drain pretty well. There's an unimproved Huntington Road ditch along the west side, an oxbow that separates it from Red Fox Lane on the north, and then there's a large oxbow on the south that collects storm water. Only a small portion of this is in a 100-year floodplain. The main impact is that there are portions of it that are within 500 and 1,000 feet of the flood control levee. And so this means either constructing homes without basements or having a specially designed and reinforced basement designed either by an architect or an engineer. This site is contiguous to residential development to the west and the south and the north, and it's also contiguous to the levee trail system on top of the dyke. While it's contiguous, it's not really well connected. The main access points are Huntington Road from Magnolia and Wayne Avenue coming from Ohio Street. Wayne lines up there with Belmont at the intersection of Ohio there and goes to the east. The character of the development that's proposed was pretty consistent with what's around it in the Shalimar Plaza, Mayfair and Golden Eagle additions. It's buffered from the Red Fox Lane, Homequist Estates area by a pretty substantial tree They're proposing, maybe what I should do, Destin, maybe could you go to that summary that kind of summarizes what their proposal is? This, is there really a summary? They've got 77 lots on their plat. 68 of them are set aside for single-family dwellings. Six lots, the ones that kind of back up to the levee on the east are proposed for two-family dwellings. They want to have multi-dwelling buildings there just to the east of the substation. And then they proposed first 16 and then 12 apartment units at the end of East Wayne. They've also got a lot that is, exists and set aside for a West Star substation that's there. And then they're proposing a public neighborhood park. And just kind of to summarize what would be public or quasi-public dedications, they're proposing a park land dedication that all totaled up would be approximately two acres. They're proposing to dedicate right-of-way along the west edge to the city for improvements to the Huntington Ditch, up to the Homequist Oxbow. They're already subject to an easement for the West Star substation. There have been discussions with West Star with trading out their existing easement for a 100-foot utility easement on the plat to replace the point-to-point or blanket easement that they have. There's also a standard line that comes out of the substation that is, has a 40-foot utility easement. And then they're proposing to dedicate drainage right-of-way on the oxbow to the north so that that would be accessible for maintenance by the City of Salina. So that is kind of a summary of their land uses and how that would lay out. As you can see from the attachments, there was, most of the focus of discussions was on the proposed parkland, to lesser degree about drainage, and then about what happens with the land at the end of East Wayne. This, after discussions with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and Planning Commission, this is what the proposed configuration of the park would be. And the goal from the comprehensive plan and neighborhood park plan was to find a location where you could get access to the levee trail without having to do it at Magnolia Road, because it's very difficult for children or even adults in the neighborhood to get out of those neighborhoods along Magnolia Road and get to the levee trail. So while the configuration here is not exactly ideal, it's kind of a panhandle. What it does is it provides a place where a fairly large number of residents can get from the neighborhoods up to the levee trail. And the, this is very much a conceptual plan, but this is what, if you were on the levee and looking straight to the west, that flat area there to the left of the poles would be parkland and also parkland beyond those trees all the way over to Red Hawk Lane. And I think there's another photo there, Destin, that shows how it actually connects to the levee. It might be two there. There it is, right. There is a, already a, this is similar to Oxbow Park, but there's already a place there where if you were to build a pedestrian bike type trail or path there coming out of the park, you could get access right up to the levee. And so that's why this location was selected. The other thing is that it's not particularly desirable to have housing units located close to or underneath those transmission lines. So by having that as public park space, that provides a buffer and keeps a distance from homes or dwelling sites from those overhead wires. The other thing that was discussed, I think if you go to slide number four, Destin, there was, has been concern at a number of venues about the oxbow that goes around Homequist Estates. And the way that is set up now, that is, for the most part, private land. It's common area owned by the Homequist Estates Homeowners Association. They're not particularly well-equipped to deal with it, but at this point, it's not even a public drainage easement. But what was a point of discussion is that there's a sanitary sewer line that goes underneath the Huntington Road ditch where it crosses this oxbow. It kind of serves as a dam or an obstruction so that you'll have parts of this oxbow that are completely dry, but this part tends to hold water year-round. And then I think if you go to the next one, Destin, this is just a closer up that shows how the pipeline that goes across there kind of serves as an obstruction and holds the water. And then I think six just shows, if you're actually down there and look at, there's actually an amazing quantity of water that's held in that area almost on a year-round basis and never really drains out. And then seven, Destin, I think this is the area where the flow from the Huntington Road ditch comes into this oxbow. And it's not particularly well-designed or improved. And I think eight, Destin, shows the, this area here and then the area to the east where the hay bales are. That is what the developers were proposing to dedicate to the city. And about four or five years ago, that was identified as a flood and drainage project to basically complete out the improvements to the Huntington Road ditch and make that a little wider, more storage capacity, make it look a little bit more like this. And so that's what it looks like at Wayne. And then that north piece isn't really improved. So the primary discussion points at the various planning commission hearings were about the parkland, the land at the end of East Wayne, and then what should be done with the drainage concerns there. After several public hearings, both with the planning commission and the park board and some revisions to the park plan, the planning commission on April 1st endorsed the concept for the neighborhood park layout and acreage. And then they made a recommendation as to the development on the lot at the end of East Wayne. And so their recommendation was to approve the planned development district and development plan with the exceptions proposed for the 20-foot front yard setback and limiting the building sites directly east of the substation to buildings that could have up to three units per building. And at the end of East Wayne, to allow for up to four duplexes to be built in that area. And then they, obviously that would be subject to coming back with a final plat for this area and final development plans fleshed out for those two outlots. I think the only other thing we would point out is that on a typical residential street in Salina, that homes would be 38 feet back from the curb line of a street. And under their proposal with the reduced setback, it would be 30 feet. So it'll seem a little more dense or closer in, but again, part of that is, if you look at this in these lots, this is an easement that West Star is proposing, which basically means that to develop homes on these sites, you've got to push them forward as far as the, and not build back in order to keep clearance from those high voltage transmission lines. Now, I don't, do you have the ARC GIS, Destin? Do you have, if you could put that up? Okay. What we would show here is that the reason that's not really an issue for these houses is because there's about an 80-foot right-of-way through here that's owned by the city that serves as a ditch and that's underneath those wires. So the main difference here is that they have platted lots that are very deep, but the rear portion of those lots are really going to be unbuildable as far as having garages or outbuildings or workshops or things like that, not being allowed under those high voltage transmission lines. So that will probably be one of the challenges is just to make sure that buyers are informed about what the limitations are back there in those backyards. But that's part of the rationale for requesting the reduced front yard setbacks so you can scoot the houses forward and at least have some usable rear yard. So I think with that, I'd be open to any questions that the commission has about those issues or the planning commission's recommendation.
Questions of staff?
I just have a quick one. The apartments that are going to be in that housing development, are they just two-story? Or are they going to be, because I know homes can be two-story, how high will those apartments be?
They were in the minutes and we'll have to see how that is reflected. They were supposed to be limited to one story.
Okay. And I was reading through there trying to find it and I might have just skipped over it.
Yeah, and that was.
They don't allow them to be any higher than that, is that right?
Yeah. And the discussion was, when it was discussed at the end of East Wayne, that you didn't want something there that would not allow people to be able to see that there was a park back there by having something that was too tall.
That was my question. Thank you.
Another clarification on that, on the Homequist subdivision side, the waterway or the former river channel, which property is that on or is it split? Is the property presently all in the Homequist subdivision?
Well, what they did there was they have common area so that the, basically. You can see it here, but these, this is the road.
Right.
And that's common area owned by all the owners and so is this. So the, it is, the channel portion is owned in common by all the owners who own lots in there.
So none of the channel is actually in the proposed Golden Eagle Number 5?
Well, the center line is roughly down the center of the channel. So the south half.
So it's half and half.
South half is in Golden Eagle, the north half from the center of the channel north is in Homequist. The difference is that usually that would be designated as some sort of public drainage easement and it's really functioning that way now because there's lots of off-site water that goes in there. But right now, it is private common area owned by the association.
So if this Golden Eagle addition is approved as proposed, is the Golden Eagle half of it proposed as public?
It would be proposed as public drainage right-of-way.
Okay.
Which is what we have tried to do with river channels whenever we get a plat, is to try to get the channel itself into some public ownership because we're generally in a better position to maintain that. And it also ensures public access.
Any further questions?
Dean, a quick question on the front yard setbacks. For those lots that have recommended 15 and 20-foot front yard setbacks, is there any, do we anticipate that any vehicles parked in the driveways would actually be parked over sidewalks?
Well, the reason for not, on the 15-foot, there would be no parking allowed between the building and the front property line. The parking would have to be in the side or rear. And on the 20-foot, that is really the minimum that you need in order to park a vehicle between a garage door and not have it overhang a public sidewalk. You would not want to go less than 20.
Okay. Because we would presume the sidewalk would be right up against that property line?
Mm-hmm.
So a 20-foot vehicle would have to be parked literally?
It'd have to be parked close to the. It'd have to be close, parked close to the, to the door of the garage. In some cases, garages are set back farther than the front, but in most cases, garages are set at the 20-foot line.
Okay.
Further questions? Is there any public comment? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Mike Benjamin in 20 Red Fox Lane here in regards to the drainage easement. Currently, as Dean says, the homeowners own the half adjacent to their property. We would propose that they would give the city a drainage easement. That has not been approved by the association as a whole yet, but most of the people out there that I've talked to don't have a problem with that, but can, couldn't get it all put together prior to this meeting. And we would ask that you seriously consider taking care of that water situation before we dump more water and trash in there with the development of the new development. Don't have a problem with the development, would just like to see that something be done with that water that's sitting out there and it's been there as long as I've been in Salina. That's always been wet back in that area from that sewer pipe back to the east.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 0810445. Requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from A1 to District R1 and R2 on a 31 acre tract of land located on the north side of East Wayne and east of the Huntington Road ditch.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve ordinance 0810445 approving application PDD 08-1 for Golden Eagle Estates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass is 5-0. Administration?
Item 8.1, resolution number 086514, expressing local support for the nomination of the White Eagle Oil Company Gas Station at 1017 South Santa Fe Avenue to the Register of Historic Kansas Places.
And Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. And commissioners, before we get into the specifics of this case, I just wanted to call attention to what's labeled as Exhibit F and it would be at the very rear of this portion of the packet. And what Exhibit F is designed to indicate was that the, the state laws and guidelines that deal with the nomination of properties are, are not real specific and are not, don't contain a lot of specific notice provisions. And so what we tried to do was to, to put and commit to writing and adopt a local procedure that when we get word of a nomination that has been made by a property owner in the city of Salina that goes up to the state, that this is the process that we're going to follow. And so we have discussed this with the Heritage Commission and also have sent this to the State Historic Preservation Office and said that when you get a nomination, please respect our local process. And so what we've let them know is that if you get a nomination, we would like at least 60 days notice of when you're going to have a, a hearing at the state level. And during that 60-day period, then we will schedule a public hearing in front of the Heritage Commission and at least 20 days before that hearing, we will send out individual mail notice to all the property owners that are potentially within an environs of a nominated property and tell them what that means and that there will be a hearing on that and the date, time and place of that hearing. And then the, what that does is, is require a public hearing in front of the Heritage Commission and then their, whatever their recommendation is as regards to the nomination would be then forwarded to the governing body. And if the Heritage Commission's recommendation is favorable, we would prepare a resolution of support for the nomination of that project for your consideration, for you to either approve or decline to approve. And then we've also highlighted in there what the, what the state process would be. And the, the one thing we would point out is that if the, both the Heritage Commission and City Commission agree that a nomination does not meet the criteria, they will cancel the hearing and not, not schedule the nomination for consideration. However, a prop, a property owner who has a, a property and that occurs, they can still appeal that and, and request a hearing or consideration by the state. But we wanted to clarify that the decision on whether a property is, is nominated and placed on a national register or state register list is made at the, at the state level and what we've tried to do is to interject as much local input and opportunity for notice that we can. And so in, in this particular case, that, that procedure was followed and in the case of the White Eagle, or the former White Eagle Gas Station at, at Santa Fe and Beloit, the owner of that property prepared a, a nomination for a placement on the state register of historic places and I think our understanding at least part of the, the motivation for that was to make the property eligible for state rehabilitation tax credits. And so we were made aware of that nomination and scheduled a hearing in front of the planning commission, sent notice to all property owners that were within 500 feet of that property and the Heritage Commission conducted a hearing on that. I believe the only, besides the applicant, the only individual that attended was an owner directly to the north that was supportive of the, the application and the applicant's efforts. And at the close of that hearing, the Heritage Commission made a, a recommendation or finding that, that the former gas station there met the applicable criteria for a, a state register or placement on the state register of historic places. So that, that comes to you with that recommendation and your opportunity to either concur with that and direct us to submit a resolution supporting that nomination. And we've outlined what the consequences of that would be. If you disagree with the recommendation and don't wish to support the nomination, those findings would be forwarded to the Kansas Historic Sites Board of Review and they can give that what weight they wish to give it and, and make a recommendation to the state Historic Preservation Officer. So I, I wanted to at least give the background of what our, what we've tried to introduce in the way of, of notice and not, have people not understand what the ramifications of that were and we've been following that, that procedure, both in the Lee complex case and in this as well. And it's our understanding that of certified local governments, only Wichita and, and Salina are using this type of, of notice provision, but we strongly believe that if you have a possibility of being placed in the environs of a particular structure, that you, you need to know about that or have an opportunity to know about that and ask questions and, and understand those ramifications ahead of time. So with that, I'd be open to any questions about the, the notice procedure or the, the application itself.
Questions for staff? I have to tell you, Mr. Andrew, I didn't think there'd ever be a topic that would come before this commission that I cared less about other than golf, but you have found one.
Okay. Well, I'd like to take credit for it, but I've got to credit the state of Kansas. They're the ones that came up with this system, so.
Are there any questions of staff?
So then how would, how would this affect the people within 500 feet?
Well, it would primarily mean that any, if there was a proposal to add on to fire station number two or to demolish a house or to do new construction, that, that would have to be at least reviewed to see if that would have any impact on the, the historical surroundings of this station or, or impact the, the historical setting in which it is placed. And that, that has had different applications over the years. I, I think, you know, what I would point out is that the Salina Masonic Temple is on the National Register of Historic Places and there have been a number of, of demolitions and things within the environs of that that have been kind of non-events because most, most of the historic setting of the 1922 Masonic Temple doesn't exist. But the, the primary impact of environs is just if you were, if you're doing a, a new construction or demolition, then you're going to be subject to some review that you're not subject to today before you do your project. It's, it's primarily a, a demolition of an existing building or a new construction or major addition that would be reviewed. And some, some things would simply be reviewed administratively and, and some things would, would be subject to a full environs review. But the, the carrot is the fact that the state rehabilitation tax credit is 25%. So if you spent $100,000 in improvements, you can theoretically get 25% of that back. So you're only out of pocket 75 instead of $100,000 and if you add on the federal tax credit, then it's 45% instead of 25%. And that's, that's part of what the motivation is.
Mr. Andrew, unless I've missed something and I very well could've, what did this gas station do other than sell gas?
It really was used for no other purpose but for selling gas.
And that is historical?
I think you could get oil changes there and candy and pop.
Maybe, maybe tires.
Was it a massage parlor?
It is now.
Massage therapy.
True. Is it vacant or is it occupied?
It is currently vacant.
So there's nothing in it right now?
Right. The massage therapist that was in there is not in there anymore.
So now it's up for sale?
Are there any other questions of staff? He's hoping not. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action. And I, for one, I guess if somebody would like to make a motion, that's great. I have voted against these historically in the past and will continue to do so because I don't believe that this has any historic significance. I think it's done entirely for the tax credits and it puts an undue burden on those property owners within the environs of it in restricting them and what they may want to do with their property.
I know the location well because many times when I was growing up, my folks filled our car with gas there. I even overfilled my own bike tire there one time and blew it out right there on the And I guess there is nostalgia for that 29 cent a gallon gas, as is mentioned in the planning commission. However, I don't think it, times change and I don't think it raises to the level of importance that would put it on par with this designation.
Mr. Binkston, do we need a motion to object to the resolution or is it possible that it would die for lack of a motion?
Look to Mr. Andrew to make sure I'm not causing any problems for anything procedurally, but I would expect that it could die for lack of a motion.
Yes. If there was not a motion for approving that resolution, it simply would not be approved and that, that was just a vehicle that, that we came up with as a way to express either support or non-support from the governing body. And if there was no support for that resolution as drafted, then you should simply take no action on it and that we would communicate to the state that there was not support from the governing body for this nomination.
Would anyone care to take action? I would say that 8.1 dies for lack of action.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 0810447, amending chapter 8, article 1 of the Salina Code by adding section 8-12.6, amending section 1004.1.2 of the 2003 International Building Code to modify the occupant load factor for manufacturing facilities.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, it's an honor to bring this item to you today, this being the first day of Building Safety Week. We think this item is a great example of the cooperation of stakeholders and, or city government to make changes in our codes which still result in safe buildings. We'd also like to take this opportunity to invite the commissioners and those citizens that are watching in our television audience today to the first of our open houses tomorrow evening at 5:30 in our offices. In addition to the opportunity to meet our staff and see some of the processes that go along there, we have some great door prizes that our citizens can enter to win, including some prizes that have been donated by Lowe's Home Improvement, Sutherland's and Star Lumber in cooperation with Building Safety Week. And so we want to recognize those folks for participating with us. The background of this item, the building code provides a method for establishing the occupant load for buildings by assigning an occupant load factor to various types of uses and then dividing the actual square footage of the design area by the assigned factor to arrive at the occupant load that would be served by the area. Our previous building code, the Uniform Building Code, assigned an occupant load factor of 200 square feet per occupant to factories. The International Building Code changed the factor to 100 square feet per occupant thereby allowing for the doubling of the number of calculated occupants to the given area. Although the change does not typically affect the design of the building for exits, since these types of uses usually have more than an adequate number of exits to meet the code requirements, increasingly calculated occupant load does have ramifications for sanitation and ventilation requirements. Doubling the calculated occupant load has the net effect of doubling the required minimum number of plumbing fixtures and the amount of ventilation that's required for the building. We have discussed this matter with several local manufacturers that have expanded their manufacturing infrastructure since the new requirements became effective. In every instance, we have been told by the owners that because of the space needed for the equipment being operated, they would never have the amount of employees working in those buildings that is derived from the square foot calculation using the new factor. Based on our anecdotal observation, we're inclined to agree with this assessment. We brought the matter on behalf of some stakeholders to the building advisory board at their April 8th meeting. After hearing stakeholder testimony in favor of the change as well as support from architect Donnie Mars, the board took the following action and made the motion to recommend to the city commission that we amend the local code requirement for this occupant load calculation. We believe that this is in conformance with strategic plan goal number three and we really believe this, the city will provide the highest quality of services consistent with the governing body direction available, resources- body direction, available resources, and staff commitment to quality. We believe this is a great example of our networking together with stakeholders to revise our codes to meet our local requirements. We believe the City Commission could act on this request in the following methods. They could approve the amendment as proposed and the attached ordinance recommend further revisions to the proposed amendment, postpone any action on the amendment request pending further review, or deny the amendment request. With that said, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have regarding this change.
Questions of staff?
I'm in agreement that the idea is a good one, but I'm curious why the, or was there any discussion of, rather than saying that it'll be the greater of either the computer rate of one occupant per 100 square feet or one per 200 gross square feet? Why not make that the lesser? And then it would be an even lower requirement for bathrooms and such other support facilities for the people that are probably not there anyway.
That's a great question, Mr. Commissioner. There was discussion regarding that, but the thought was that the International Building Code had assigned that factor at 100 and allowing that number to escalate up to some number that was 400 or 500 square feet and the occupant load thereby determined wasn't really consistent with the idea that we're going to design buildings for exiting, which is the primary concern for building safety, is the exiting. And since these types of buildings can change uses, I mean, change owners and the processes that occur in them might change from owner to owner, that it was more consistent to try and leave that at some number that wouldn't be, you would diminish the exiting requirements and then somebody else come in with a more intense use and the building wouldn't have enough exits, for example. So that was why we set the option at the greater of the requirements rather than at the lesser of the requirements.
It still seems like, if you went with 100,000-square-foot building, which I know we've talked about having such things at the Airport Authority, for example, then your choice, and you had a modern plant that was highly automated, and say 70% of it, 70,000 square feet of the 100,000 is devoted to equipment, then that's, under the one formula, that would be 300 persons and the other formula would be 500 persons, we'd go with the 500 rather than the 3, the way this is written.
That'd be correct.
And my choice is to make that word lesser and go with the 300.
My question on that, we talk about equipment here, but let's say we are talking about an Airport Authority building and there are items, larger items, an airplane, for example, that they're working on, is there any consideration for the item that they're working on?
Well, the buildings that are contemplated currently under the Airport Authority aren't factory occupancies. They are S2 airplane repair facilities, which is a different calculation than what's being proposed here under the F for factory occupancies.
I only said Airport Authority because I knew that they were contemplating 100,000-square-foot buildings and 100,000 was a nice convenient number to use. So we'd say 100,000-square-foot manufacturing plant on North Street where we have new water and sewer facilities. And it's general manufacturing that would qualify under this. My example still comes in there and the answer comes back that you need more exits, not only more bathrooms.
Right. The Building Code usually tries to set, you can increase the occupant load to a higher number. For example, if you intend to have more people in the building than the number that's derived by the occupant load factor, the Building Code allows that as long as you provide the additional exits that are necessary to accommodate that increased load. But you aren't allowed to decrease that load below that base threshold with, and again, I can only suggest that the reason that it's in there, my understanding of the codes, is that the use of these buildings are transitory and so they're going to build in a minimum number of occupants. That'd be generally characterized by the average use of that kind of a space and not build it for a fully automated plant where you might have one person in a control room that's operating everything. They're still going to say that if there's a manufacturing and there's some employees working in that space, this is the minimum number of employees we're going to use so that we can make sure that they have adequate egress, means of egress from the building.
Well, and judging by what you wrote here or what's in this blue sheet, it said that the, the owner said that they would never have the amount of employees working in those buildings that is derived from the square foot calculation using the new factor. So they feel that that number is too, they're not comfortable with that.
That would be the 100-square-foot number, yes, Commissioner, that would be the 100-square-foot number that's currently in the International Building Code that we've adopted.
They're comfortable with the higher number?
They're comfortable with, yes, they were comfortable with going back to what the old Uniform Building Code factor was, which was 200 square feet.
But yet they still want us to amend it to, they want us to go ahead and observe the new requirement, is that right? Is that what we're voting on?
Yeah, they are in support of the amendment, which would change the current Building Code requirement from 100 square feet to 200 square feet, which is what is being proposed here today.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Public comment? Guess not. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Vannierd moved that we approve our first reading ordinance 08-10447, amending the pertinent section of Salina Code by adding a section, amending section 1004.1.2 of the 2003 International Building Code to modify the occupant load factor for manufacturing facilities.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 0810447, which amends Chapter 8, Article 1 of the Salina Code by adding Section 8, 12.6, amending Section 1004.1.2 of the 2003 International Building Code to modify the occupant load factor for manufacturing facilities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. There's no other business. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
We're adjourned.